You take the red beads off.
Yes, you do.
I'm told these are Dorothy's.
Dorothy's, Mr. Boss.
Yeah, yeah, put the heels together.
He did that.
Right?
He did too.
I'd like to call the regular council meeting on Tuesday, April 20, 2015, to order. I'll ask everyone to please rise without breaking your ankles. We'll have the invocation led by Councilman Kara, followed by the pleasure allegiance led by Councilman Mace.
Oh, loving God, Creator and Father of all, we pray with heavy hearts, as we remember and listen to the ongoing violence in the Middle East and the terrible things that are happening to Christians. We grieve for those who have died, and we pray for those who are injured. Father of mercy, we commend them to your loving hand, asking you to grant rest to the deceased, healing at full recovery to the injured, and comforting peace to their loved ones. May the seamless violence we see in our world somehow be replaced with peace and harmony. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Kara, Conley, Evans.
Here.
Lasky.
Here.
Mace.
Here.
Stortle. Gersky.
Here.
We'll have the reading in a minute of the regular council meeting held on April 7, 2015.
Motion to accept the motion.
Second by Dave, second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. And so the agenda is special business. I think what we're going to do is kind of explain why the Tamaco Borough Council is wearing women's shoes, except for Kara, she wears women's shoes to every council meeting. We did, this is the third year in a row that the Tamaco Council and the borough manager warned of women's shoes on, to a council meeting in support of an annual event that's run by the Sexual Assault Resource Counseling Center. It's called Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. It's held every year in Pottsville. The event is this Thursday at 4:30, and it's to raise awareness for something that really impacts our community but people are really afraid to talk about, which is sexual assault, sexual violence, rape, and other crimes, gender crimes. It's really something that you can't pick up the newspaper without reading about something awful and terrible happening, whether it's in Tamaco or one of the neighboring communities. It happens all over, it happens all the time. It happens in our community, and unfortunately, we've all been raised to not talk about it and to be silent on the issue. And so the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event is a way to get people, in a kind of a silly way, to start a conversation about rape, about sexual violence, and specifically about ways to prevent it and to deal with it. So I know we have Christine Verder, who's on the board of SARC, who's also a school and township supervisor. Welcome to our municipal meeting here, Christine. And I know Kara is on the SARC advisory committee too, so I don't know if you want to say anything about the event or about the Walk a Mile or about SARC.
No, I think you've covered it.
So we, the event is 4:30 on Thursday. It's a little hard for the folks in this end of the county to get over there. I know Andy has participated in the last two years where you put on women's shoes and walk up and down the streets of Pottsville. They get a really nice crowd there, and they do a really nice, they do a really nice job, and it really gets people's attention and gets them to talk about a real serious issue. I know, and you could talk to our police officers, you know, our police officers spend a ridiculous amount of time. It's really sad and tragic that they spend so much time on sexual assault issues and not just, of any, of many ages too. You know, the clients that the Sexual Assault Resource Counseling Center councils, the victims of sexual assault and the survivors, they range in age from several months old to into their nineties. This is something that affects all age groups, it affects all genders, and it's something that Tamaco takes seriously. And I know that there's an effort right now also to train people on how to, how to create a community that prevents violence against people. You may have heard of the Green Dot Program. That's a program that trains people on how to take steps to prevent it. Christine, thank you for bringing your wardrobe and letting us share your shoes.
Thank you.
And we're ready for the rest of the council. Anyone want to add anything? Kara, you want to say anything?
No.
You look too pleased.
I, Tom is great. He's channeling his energy really good. Can you give us a few notes?
Communications.
I have two. First is from Nicholas Sigmont, branch executive Tamaco YMCA. For the last several years, the Tamaco YMCA has been granted the use of the bungalow pool for use during their summer adventure camp. At this time, we would like to request use of the pool for the upcoming 2015 summer. Thank you for considering the use of your pool facility for the Tamaco YMCA this summer. We know the borough pool gets a tremendous amount of use in the summertime and appreciate any kind of accommodations that you can provide for us. I would like to request use of the 9:30 to 11:00 a.m. time slot. Hopefully, the time requested will not interfere with the regular hours of the pool. Again, we appreciate anything you can provide for us.
Make the motion to grant the request in the next letter. We'll second that motion.
Motion by Dave, second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
Next is from David J. Meredith, CH Berry Post Number 173, requesting permission to hold the annual Memorial Day Parade on May 25 on Broad Street, beginning at 11, I'm sorry, 10:00 a.m.
Motion to grant, Mr. Meredith, request it. I'll second that motion.
Motion by Dave, second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it. Borough manager reports.
Thank you. I guess first off, I just like to mention that one of our demolition projects is underway. Their SDL construction is demolished on 2016 Fifth Street, and they encountered a few delays with the rain, but it seems to be going well. The other properties are being demolished by another contractor, Northeast Industrial Services Corporation, and they expect to start demolishing one of those structures in the next week or two. So that's progressing pretty well. Also, our codification is also progressing, as well as the property approval that we discussed a couple weeks ago. I don't have anything more to share with you on those, but I know they're, they're progressing. Also, we were contacted by Karen Parrish, who's our CDBG consultant, and she'd like us to start thinking about having the first public hearing for the 2015 CDBG application. She, she would like to be here for that, to answer any questions.
When's as soon as we can, we'd be ready to have that.
Well, I know she's not available on May 19th, so I suppose May 5th or June 2nd. She would like to do it at some point in May or June. And she isn't available until 19th, so I guess May 5th or June 2nd. And we don't, as you recall, we don't need to have a list of projects for the first hearing. It is, we just sort of talk about broad ideas, talk about potential projects. We don't need the actual list of projects until the second public hearing, which they're planning to do collectively under the county. Let's have this, perhaps sort of a June meeting. Something that we requested for ahead of time, or certainly at the top of the session during the hearing, some clarification on what prohibited use in the art at this point, I think would be beneficial. What's eligible for.
Yeah.
I do know, I could give you a little bit of information right now. I mean, certainly we can apply for administrative funds, which we would use if there were staff and a consultant. And I believe the limit on that is 18 percent. Demolition is eligible anywhere, and ADA accessibility issues.
Isn't there a cap on how much we can spend on demolition?
There is a cap on demolition. I don't remember what it is. It's, if you take the total of patients subtract administration, I think you're allowed 30 percent of what's left for demolition, I believe. And ADA accessibility issues, there's no limit, and there's no, we're not limited to any area for any dollar amount.
How about the bathhouses at Tamaco?
Well, the CDBG, as you recall, is based on our census data, which is done every 10 years. In between that, they do projections. Well, last year, we lost our low-mob income benefit for the whole community. Prior to that, the whole community, you could do a community facility type of project, like the library or the park or stuff like that. And it was assumed to be a low-mob benefit, low-mob or income benefit, because the whole community was classified as low-mob. We lost them last year. So now we have to look at doing projects within certain areas that have been identified as low-mob or income, per their census projections.
If I can add to that, recreation, who's met last week, for the items on our agenda later on. One of the items I've talked about was the bathhouse project and the grants that we're applying for it and the ramifications of that change in the status of the low-income mod and how that would affect us. Out of the previous rules, we were very confident that the bathhouse project would qualify under CDBG funding. We left that meeting with a question for John Martin, who's the SRC director, who's going to be helping us put the application together to determine if the bathhouses will have some accessibility or access components to them, the bathrooms you have to have, follow ADA guidelines for certain portion of facilities. And he was left with a directive to contact ECNR to try and determine how, if that would be applicable or prevent, if we could somehow use a portion of a CDBG, CDBG funding for a portion of the project. So that's an open question right now. Depending on the answer, we're going to maybe necessarily revise the bathhouse allocation for 2013 and 2014 application. I'll get back to you on that.
What kind of advertising those to any for the year?
I believe a week prior, we need to have something in the newspaper posted.
Does council have a preference if we do it on May 5th or June 2nd?
Sooner the better.
Sooner. That's what I was going to do.
May 5th?
Yep.
So we're going to check with Karen, advertise it for May 5th?
Okay. May 5th, I don't have any snags, I'll let you know. Just one other thing, I, we were, I was talking to one of our engineers at Alfred Vanish, and I thought it might be appropriate to do another inspection of the La Bash Creek soon. It's been, believe it or not, it's been seven or eight years since we walked the whole length of the tunnel. So I asked, I asked them if they could give us a proposal to accompany us on an inspection of the entire tunnel. We still have that depression by the library. It's, it seems to us that it's expanded a little bit over the winter, so that's something we want to pay close attention to. So I don't have any numbers to give you, but I have asked them to give us the proposal, and I'll get that to you when I have that. That's, that's everything I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor, did the chief give any reports?
He does not have any reports.
Committee reports. Public safety committee. Dan?
Yes, under public safety, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the police pension plan. It should be attached to everyone's package.
Motion by Dan and a second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? It's just that this reflects the pension changes that we made in the last contract. Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote to adopt the ordinance.
Kara?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Lasky?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
And Gersky?
Yes.
Motion passed. Anything else on the public safety again?
Yes, also attached to your package, there should be a note from the chief regarding an application for Colin Leibensberger, and as well as a description of Corporal Woods doing the background investigation. I'd like to make a motion to hire Colin Leibensberger as a part-time police officer effective immediately.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it. Anything else on the public safety?
No, thank you.
Recreation, any of you convinced?
As I alluded to before, we did it last week. Also present at that meeting was Adrian Wembolski, who we hired last week as our manager for the upcoming season. And after discussing personnel issues with her and the rest of the committee, I'd like to make a motion to hire Matt Stanek as assistant pool manager at a pay rate of $12.50 per hour.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Dave, second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just a comment, this, Matt will be replacing Chelsea Jones, who served as our assistant manager for a number of years. Did an excellent job, but she's moving on to the bigger and better part of her life and starting her professional career. So that's why the position came open, and that is Adrian's recommendation.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor want to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
I'd also like to make a motion to hire Emily Wembolski as senior lifeguard at a pay rate of $10 per hour when acting as pool manager.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Dave, second by Dan. Any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
And lastly, should I have my fingers stuck in the wall of the page? I'd like to make the motion to hire the part-time lifeguards and clerks for the 2015 season. Their names are listed in the packet, but I would just like to read them. The motion would be for the clerk position to hire Sage Frye, Beth for Senior Jones, Brianna Heck, and Emily Wenzel. And for a lifeguard, Earl Aitkins, Allison Amadeo, Emily Wembolski, Joanne Budkis, Ethan Ebers, Chelsea Franz, Xander Getz, Amber Bullock, Kaitlin Holland, Melanie Kosteki, Victoria LeVar, John Ritzko, Olivia Stanek, Nathan Steigerwald, Chance Zabo, Savannah Zabo, Benjamin Toronto, and Cage Wynn. I'm sorry.
Motion by Dave, a second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Just one question, does that list match your list? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
I have no further motions. I would report that I had gotten a couple of positive feedback comments regarding the guest pass program that we're starting this year, so hopefully that will be a successful program.
Anything else about that committee? Any other committee reports?
Yes, I just would like to update the council as far as building and equipment goes. I believe that we have moved forward and ordered the F-550 truck, correct? From, from Pro-March. We also have settled upon a cat wheel loader. We brought in two other models to demonstrate for a week, and we have settled on the cat wheel loader. I believe the repairs for the sweep, street sweeper, were approved this last council meeting. And I did stop at the street garage and take a look at it with the mechanics, and they assured me that they would have that back online as soon as the parts arrived. They're standing ready to do that. And there were just a couple other things that I will take up with building and equipment regarding a bearing press and an air greaser that they had spoke to me about purchasing. That's it.
Any other committee?
I may add one thing. Our web developer, I think, needs some input from you to make some additional strides in developing a draft, if you will, of the borough's website. Yes, I'll speak with you on that.
Okay.
Any other committee reports?
For parking and traffic, I would just like council to consider Cottage Avenue. We had discussed this about possibly creating a one-way. That's the path to Hunter.
Did the committee review it all?
Well, we had talked to, there was a gentleman who came from Hampton, came to council, I would say, three days ago. I have not been able to get a chance to, to connect with him, but I know that I had talked to Dan just in passing about it, and it's, you know, do you have it go from east to west, or do you have it go from west to east? That's just kind of the big question right now. What would suit that section of Cottage Avenue? We'll be discussing that.
So that's the police department, some input. Any other committee reports? Mayor's report.
I only have one item. I would like to introduce to council their newest hire. Sorry, I was involved a couple minutes ago. But Colin Leibensberger, please meet Dan Evans. Carrie Lasky.
Uh.
Of course, Kevin Steigerwald, who runs the borough.
Uh.
President and council Mike Gersky. What size shoe do you wear?
Size shoe.
I have a perfect pair for you.
Georgia, of course, will make sure you get a paycheck. We have Tom, Kara, and Dave Mace. Thank you for coming out. Your own graduations.
Thank you.
Good luck and be careful.
All right, thank you.
Where are you from?
Hometown.
Hometown.
Yeah.
Welcome to work.
Thank you.
Anything else, Karen?
That is all I have. Thank you.
All right. Anybody from the floor wish to address council about any matter? Solicitor's report. Mike regretted that he had to leave the meeting early. He was here briefly. He had a family issue he needed to attend to, and so he didn't have anything to report. I'm glad he came anyway, and he wanted to get out of here, so he went to apologize. We have various reports from the departments of the borough.
Make a motion to accept the motion.
I'll second it. We have a motion by Dave and a second by Tom to accept the reports from the departments. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Could I make a comment about the report we got from Barry ISIS this morning?
Yeah.
You can take a look at it. There's plenty of detail on here that we've been asking Barry ISIS for, and I think you put more on here than we think we asked for. You could see the quality of light tickets, the property maintenance items for March, and then the next page, rental inspections, health licenses, and then the hours that the, his employees spend here. Probably not here. Most of these hours, I guess, are spent here, but some of these hours, they could be working from a Barry ISIS office. And then another good thing is the permit revenue that they collect, and they have broken it down really well. Inspections, state how much we get, and they have it done into the United UCC and zone, so. It's a good report. It was a long battle, but we got it done. Kevin, if you can, you know, I'll probably stop. I'll talk to Matt when these days come in and thank him for doing this for us.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? The reports are all available to the public. If anybody wants to see a copy of the reports, ask Kara. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. Do we have any unfinished business? For these building claims?
Karen, my son Brian yesterday, we built, had a review, all the bills, didn't find any, anything wrong with any of them. Motion to update the bills.
I second that motion.
Motion by Tom, second by Kara. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it. New business. We need an executive session.
I just, could I have just one second under new business? In the packet tonight, there was a note from the Department of Environmental Protection advising us that we are in a drought watch declaration. Includes 27 counties, including Carbon School, Luzern, and a variety of the other surrounding counties. I just would like to remind everyone, since I also am a member of the fire department, that we, we are in some very dry conditions. There is a drought watch declaration. They're requesting to conserve water and please be vigilant in terms of fires. We did see a rather large one on the front page of the paper last night, so again, please be careful with, I don't believe there is a burn. There is a dark, again, just please, please be vigilant and as always, conserve water. One other thing I just wanted to ask, maybe Mayor Morrison could give us some information. I understand that we had the ladder truck in for service. We had talked about tires. Do you have anything to tell us about what happened with your ladder truck?
My understanding is the tires are needed, so it's time for inspection. Need eight tires. There's some question of exactly what the measurement was. My understanding was it did not meet the 35, 32 requirement. There was some, some other prop, but regardless, it does need tires.
Right. Okay, so sooner than later.
Eight tires are needed if they're ASAP.
Okay. You and I have talked about the end of the year possibly, but it's just sooner than later.
It's needed now. At this point, I do understand also one of our staff members here at the borough has become certified in inspection as well.
Yes.
So that is, is something that just took place recently as well.
Today, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, so the four tires are needed, or the eight tires are needed, depending, I believe, Rob, at some other prices? So we're working on that. My understanding correct, Kevin?
Yeah, we were looking at buying tires from the Co-Stars program.
Could be a little bit cheaper.
Like where we buy ours from.
Sure.
And we, it would save us a few dollars.
Excellent.
I remember the chief had told us there were 10 tires on the vehicle. Is that incorrect?
That is correct. The two fronts and the eight drive tires. The drive tires are the ones that were.
Okay, so the front ones are still there and?
That was my understanding, because they were tires that were needed to pass inspection. What did you get at Co-Stars? Did you get a price?
No, I don't know the price.
The price, the price that was quoted was, was, I believe, somewhere around $900, and I believe it was a little bit cheaper through Co-Stars. Is that correct? $900 for an tire?
I believe it is, and I don't know.
I believe it's a little bit cheaper at Co-Stars, and then there will obviously be an installation where however, whatever that happens, or whether our guys can.
I believe our guys can install them, and they will have to bring it back to Kerry for the inspection.
Yeah. And with that, there was a couple of minor issues. The ground light was out. There was a wire on a, for a pedal control that had been chafed. And another issue that came up last year during the inspection that we passed on. And another issue that came up last year during the inspection that we passed on getting was about a thousand dollar repair. And one other, there was four items. At the time, talking with Rob, I believe one of the foremen from the ladder was able to repair two or three of them, and he was looking into another repair, temporary repair for the fourth item as well, so.
Is it still over with their mayor or?
You know, I, I got tied up at the end of the day, I thought Keith was bringing home today, so I, I didn't get verification.
I'm just curious.
Kevin, do you need approval to, to purchase those tires and get this done? Okay, so.
They wouldn't want to divide them without approval, so.
Correct. Okay, so is it appropriate then to make a motion? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to purchase the eight tires necessary to make the ladder compliant with inspection, for Pennsylvania state inspection, and have them installed as soon as possible.
Motion by Dan, second by Dave. Just under the question, I would include, under the Co-Stars program?
I'll make my motion, include the Co-Stars program.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed no? Ayes have it. It's always nice to give them clear direction.
Sure.
Anything else under new business? We have executive session. I need a brief executive session to talk about a real estate issue.
Motion to move into the executive session to discuss real estate matters.
We could pause for a full, another second?
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Dan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed no? Ayes have it. So we're going to go into an executive session before the end of the meeting to discuss a real estate matter.